Good evening and welcome to the July 8, 2019 meeting of the Northampton School Committee. My name is David Narckwitz, the mayor, and I'm chairing the meeting. I want to begin by asking the clerk to please call the role of the school committee.
Mayor David Narckwitz?
Present.
Ms. Molly Burnham?
Present.
Mr. Rebecca Duskinski is not here tonight. Ms. Laura Fallon?
Present.
Ms. Anne Hennessy?
Present.
Mr. Monte Kaufman?
Present.
Mr. Downey Meyer cannot make it tonight. Mr. Howard Moore?
Here.
And Susan Voss?
Present.
Mr. Enzo Husky?
Present.
Your honor, we have a forum.
Excellent. I just want to let the members of the public know that this meeting is being audio and video recorded. We begin each meeting with a public comment period, and we ask if there's members of the public who wish to speak in public comment to please step forward to the podium. And I don't know if we have anyone signed up. Okay, there's no one signed up. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in public comment? Was that a yes or no? Oh, okay, just making sure. Okay, don't want to force anybody. Next, I'll ask if there are any announcements from members of the school committee. Anyone making -- oh, yes, Ms. Burnham.
I have two announcements. I'll start by, I'd like to thank Laura Fallon. Laura served on the MAS C Resolution Committee, and there was no resolution around charter school funding, and she put forward a resolution. All the resolutions will be submitted to the board on Thursday, and the ones that pass will be sent to the delegate assembly at the MAS C conference in November to be voted on by delegates across the state and will drive the advocacy for that year. So I'd like to publicly thank Laura for doing that great work. And the second announcement is, after thinking long and hard, I've decided to run for Ward Five and Hennessy's seat as opposed to the at-large position that I have been in. So I've taken my papers out and will be getting those back. So I wanted the public to know that I won't be running for the at-large seat that I hold right now, but for Ward Five, which is my neighborhood, and I've wanted to get a little smaller and work just in my neighborhood.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Any other announcements? Ms. Fallon.
I did just want to thank Ms. Burnham first, but in the day, and Revere, and speaking out so strongly against the expansion.
It's Revere.
Yeah. Apparently not a name. Sorry. But, yeah, so they do speak out against the expansion of the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School. So I know that that was a long trip, and I appreciate you doing it. Great.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Hennessy, for that translation service.
Yep.
Any other announcements from the school committee? Okay, next, we will move on to recommended announcements, actions, rather. We have the approval of the minutes of the school committee meeting of June 13, 2019, and the field trip approval of the Jackson Street School Trip to Nature's Classroom in Beckett, Massachusetts, October 15 through the 18, 2019. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there a question?
I have one and maybe two corrections to the notes.
Okay, so then we'll take the minutes off of the consent agenda, and we'll just vote on the approval of the remaining item, which is the field trip approval. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, as with one item removed, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Okay, and if you would maybe make a motion for the minutes with whatever amendments you'd like to see to them.
Okay.
Or corrections, rather.
They're very minor, I think, but I just wanted to make sure they were correct. Sorry, I'm getting the page back. So the motion would be under public comment period. The second person, I believe, should be Kate Dollard. Not with a B. I believe it's D.O.L.L.A.R.D. I'm not sure if there's one.
Probably a spell checker turned it into Ballard.
Probably. And then, I'm not sure about this, so others can chime in, but we have future business and meeting dates, and I recall that maybe the superintendent evaluation subcommittee was changed and did not happen on June 17, but it appears in these notes that it might have.
That was probably meant to be July. Should I have a Monday's agenda?
I think it's the 24th this.
It was changed because of negotiations.
Yeah, it got changed because of negotiations, I remember. Yeah.
It might have been, it might have been correct at the time it was announced.
It was correct.
It was on the agenda, and then it got changed after.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. So would you move to approve with those two changes?
I would.
Okay. Is there a second? Any other comments? All those in favor, then, of approving the minutes with those changes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Okay, so now we'll move into the reports and recommendations, and we will begin with the introduction of our new principal at Leeds Elementary Schools, Christine Wentz. And so please step forward to the podium and...
Short.
Okay.
All right. Well, good evening. I'd like to thank Dr. Provost, mayor, and all the school committee members for the opportunity to introduce myself to the larger district community as principal of Leeds Elementary School. It is truly an honor and a privilege to be part of such a positive community. I feel very fortunate to have participated in the alt-retreat in June to begin preparing for the upcoming school year, and the Northampton Administrative Leadership Team has been very warming, welcoming, supportive. It's been wonderful. In my first five days at Leeds, I've had the opportunity to meet many students, families, staff members, and attend the Summer Eats kickoff at Ryan Road today. At the Family Fourth Celebration, members of the Leeds PTO introduced me to many students and families from Leeds and all over Northampton. It was a great event to be at. Together with the support of the PTO, we have set up several opportunities for caregivers and community members to meet before school begins. So on July 17, you can stop by for coffee, tea, and pastry in the Leeds Playground at 9:00 a.m. August 1 at 6:00 p.m., we'll offer pizza with the principal on the playground. August 24, students, caregivers, and community members are welcome to a chalk draw at Leeds Playground at 10:00 a.m. And also, we're setting up an evening at Meadowbrook for an outreach meet and greet. The date and time will be set shortly. And all of those, of course, are weather permitting. We'll be inside if there is some weather issues. During the next months, I'll be establishing new relationships with the community. It's my intention to continue the legacy of Mr. Kanata, to collaborate with all stakeholders to support the district's core values, providing engaging learning experiences, enabling students to reach their potential, all while nurturing kindness and empathy. Throughout my educational career, I've built many positive relationships with students, caregivers, and stakeholders, and really look forward to developing many more at Leeds and in Northampton. As many of you may know or not know, I am in the process of relocating and have found a residence in Florence. So I'll be moving in August, and I'm very excited to become part of the Northampton community.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, yeah. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Principal Wentz? Dr. Provost?
I do not. I asked her a bunch of questions.
Right, yes, already answered all of his questions, so we'll welcome, and we look forward to working with you as part of the alt team.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is a vote. This is on transition coordinator. I believe recognize Pam Plummer, who's here, and is this a job description?
Job description.
Yes, so this is the approval of a job description.
Right, so you had a chance to ask questions around the time the budget was approved, but I'm, this is the job description that we gathered based on some of the feedback that some of the discussion we had at that meeting, and also local and national job descriptions for transition coordinators. And ours is a half-time position, but I think it's doable with this job description.
Okay. Are there questions from this? Yes.
I think that my biggest concern is that there are so many bullet points on, and when I get to the bottom and it says 3.5 hours a day working, I sort of wonder if some, not to micromanage, but if some of those bullet points are a part, are embedded in some of the other tasks.
Yep, they certainly are, and I think also what was why it was important in different spots where we said they serve as a consultant, the liaison, liaison still has these other roles, it's not taking over these positions, because right now we have nobody doing the position. And I think it also is clear that certainly the primary goal for this position is to start with our 18 to 22-year-old students and be able to shift down from there as time allows, which absolutely is doable for the upcoming year. As time goes on, we're actually going to have a lot more 18 to 22-year-old students. We actually have some local, smaller school districts who are looking to tuition students into our programs. So I think to start with that focus is important and to grow, but to be able to start with a .5 position focused on that smaller group of students is doable, for sure.
It's really great having, you know, dear friends who do have children that are, that have that same need. I'm very moved that we're thinking of the whole community, but it is a lot of bullet points.
So I had Mr. Moore, and then I'll come back to you.
I don't know, this isn't really in the job description, but it seems like there's some of the things might overlap with the whoever is sort of coordinating internships at the high school, and in terms of the bullet points, if there'd be a way, you know, particularly in terms of, you know, identifying sort of, you know, whatever you call them, you know, jobs or placements, you know, community resources, if that is possible to coordinate those two lists as opposed to having two possibly competing or overlapping lists?
Yeah, that's absolutely a goal. We also have our pre-ets program, which we just found out that Riverside is our pre-ets organization that we'll be working with, so it's lots of different pieces. I think this position for me, the key piece is there, like the case manager for the students that we absolutely have to be making sure these programs are solid and in place for. But, yeah, certainly some of the internship sites, there will be some overlap, and over time, there'll be a lot more knowledge of where these resources in the community exist. They're there now, where our connections are just sort of, they're not as strong as I'd like them to be.
Ms. Voss.
I'm just curious how many students we have right now in that 18 to 22, and where, how quickly you see it growing, and how fa, what do you see it growing to in the next few years?
We have a number of juniors. I don't know the numbers precisely, but I'd say like close to half a dozen juniors, or going into senior year, actually. We have a lot of students going into senior year. And then we have a couple of students at Riverside, a few students who access services at Prospect Meadow Farm. We have a student who's going into the ICE program at UMass next year, which requires, they all just require so much troubleshooting and management. It's not a lot of students, but it really does require a lot, being able to respond and knowing that that's, you as the liaison, you're the primary person, and that's your responsibility. There aren't any other things on your plate. But over time, we have a number of students coming, and as I mentioned, some students who are looking to tuition in also, so, because some of these smaller towns don't have programs, so, yeah.
Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. So I share the same concerns when I first read this as Mrs. Burnham. First of all, let me thank you again, you know, I'm a big fan of this and we've talked about it and stuff, so thank you for ever been reaching out. But it kind of feels like you've gotten all these great sort of potential functions, and it just feels rather overwhelming for a halftime person. So if we're, if, I'm just concerned about running the risk of alienating someone that's interested in just as, I just can't do this. Can we add language that says, due to the fact that this is a .5 position, some of these essential functions will need to be prioritized?
Oh, yeah, if that's allowable, I'm not, I'm not well-versed in how the job descriptions get edited after this point, but I think that's totally reasonable. Certainly, that's how I would see it as the supervisor of this.
Right, I mean, if we had full time, would you add to this?
I think we wouldn't add to this. I think we'd spread down, we'd be able to start going earlier and earlier in the students' experience.
With more experience, yeah.
Yeah, yep.
So that was one, are you looking to Dr. Provost to say whether that's okay?
Well, I think, right now, they're all called essential functions. So it's hard to say that some of the essential functions are not so essential. I think the way to do it is to maybe have a list of essential functions and then have a list of other duties, and the, if you can find things that you could move from the essential function list to the other duties list.
That would be helpful, I think. The other is, I didn't, in reading this, unless I missed it, I didn't know whether this was a, I know, this is, is this a teacher A position?
Yes.
So I don't think that's there.
A unit A? Yes.
It was on my draft.
It could be seen as administrative job, but the title of coordinator, so I think that would be helpful for candidates. I, I also am concerned, because it reads to me like a case manager, like you said, and a systems builder, and builder, and someone who's developing relationships that are going to be long-lasting and deeper and better for families, and doing PD for teachers and educators, and being a liaison with the community. That in and of itself is a monstrous kind of position, but what scares me is that there's a number of bullets there that talk about direct service with students. And my concern, having, having seen this many times, is that a systems builder kind of person is difficult for people to comprehend, and they begin to ask that person to do a job that sucks up all their time, like, can you find this kid a position, or can you support them on the job? And I'm, so I'm concerned that you're running the risk of adding too many elements of direct service here without a caveat, which I noticed you added before about attending transition planning meetings, like you purposely said, you won't be attending all of them. There's not that many even, but I'm more concerned about the fact that it says pretty explicitly the direct service component, and so I'm wondering, is that something that you share my concerns, and is, and if so, is there anything you can do to add the language here? Because, again, I think a candidate would be equally as concerned if they wanted to get out of that realm and move into a more of a management coordinator, systems-building position, they would be concerned.
I definitely see it as absolutely possible for our core group of students who currently are 18 to 22 as being able to provide, honestly, our sites provide most of the direct care. But at this point, there's no, there's none, right? There's really no link between a person who is going between that site and coming back to the school and sharing what's happening and being able to make those connections. So if, to start, I think it's totally doable. If we were to think that that person would be able to do it for all of the 18 to 22 students plus the students 14 to 18 who are possibly going to get services 18 to 22 and beyond that, then I think it would be very, very helpful. But that's not what I'm foreseeing, at least, at the beginning. We could put a caveat in.
I guess I'm just confused. I mean, bullets that say work with individual students or group of students to prepare them for the workplace, including a lengthy list of things, there was about job placement, working with, utilizing a work-based learning plan or similar to, those, do you understand my concern?
So those are the things that the sites are doing. There's just, there has to be someone from the Northampton Public Schools who's connected to that to ensure that that's occurring.
Absolutely.
So I don't see that they'll be creating a whole lot. It's really just partnering. So the language could be different.
Maybe that was what I got at.
Similar to the language with the special education liaisons. It's really partnering to ensure it occurs versus being, so we have our OT and our speech-language pathologists, they are doing all this direct work, but then connecting it to the work that's happening outside, I think that's the place where.
I think we're saying the same thing. So when I read it, I was concerned, it's about job placement, and I didn't want that person to lose the other responsibilities you want them to do. So if I'm just one person, and I read it that way, I think it would be helpful to, to look at just making sure that, I think your, the wording of case management sounds good, like it's not direct service, and if it was direct service, as you know, it just takes so many hours, and I think that would alienate some people that are, that are ready for this position.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Hennessy.
I think this is great, and I do understand what he's saying about that one. And I get the 18 to 22-year-old, that this were, where the focus will have to be, and that this hasn't, you've been doing this with your team.
And the high school folks have been doing it, yep.
So do you feel like this will initially take a lot of your time to supervise, and how much do you, are you concerned about that?
No.
Okay.
Because right now, I'm, yeah, and it's so spread out, and I, you know, counting on so many people, and to know that, you know, I, we all have a vision, and I think it's a similar vision, it's just that person who can ensure that these three steps happen in order to make, in order to make the outcomes that we're looking for for these students happen, that's the piece that's just not there right now, and it's so hard, because we all have competing, competing, really seriously competing issues that pop up, and to prioritize things is really hard. And so to know somebody, this is going to be their primary priority, is just really, it feels really good.
So for a little while, it'll be a little bit more.
For a little while, yeah.
As long as it's a little while.
Yeah.
Okay. So are there any other questions? Ms. Fallon, you seem puzzled.
I'm perplexed with all the, if we're supposed to be voting on this in concept or voting on this actual description with all of the changes that have been suggested?
I think there was just, there weren't, I don't know that there were changes suggested. There was one caveat language put in, and there was also a suggestion that they be some actions, outside duties, you know, be changed to outside duties, so we, yes.
Can I offer an amendment to the motion?
Okay.
Which would be, the motion as stated with the addition to leave it up to Dr. Plummer to figure out what makes sense in terms of our feedback and to approve it with that caveat.
Okay.
That'd be great, so I'd love to hire this person this time.
So that's the motion. Ms. Fallon, would you second that motion? Okay. Any other questions about the description? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Okay, so that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Plummer. Next, we have a series of donations. The first is a donation from the NHS PTO to the math department, $1,000, art department, $1,000, science department, $600, sound equipment, $1,350, for a total of $3,950. Do you have anything to add about those?
No, I think that details all the information that I have as well.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept the donation from the Northham High School PTO in the amount of $3,950.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Next, we have another donation from the NHS PTO. This is a broken-down chorus field trips, 1,000, robotics class software, 1,000, goals class, 250, for a total of $2,250. Anything unique about these? Okay.
Motion to accept the gift donation from the Northham High School PTO in the amount of $2,250.
Is there a second? Okay. Any questions about this one? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? And then finally, we have a gift from the Bridge Street PTO to the LEGO League Junior Robotics Program, $4,000. Ms. Lemica, is there anything?
The only piece I'd like to add is that it's going to fund the elementary school team registrations and participation in the first LEGO League Junior Robotics Program.
Okay, excellent.
I'm, make a motion to accept the donation from the Bridge Street PTO in the amount of $4,000.
Second.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Okay.
And once again, just a grand thank you to the PTOs for this gift of over $10,000 to the Northham Public Schools. It's absolutely wonderful.
Yeah. Next, we have a report from Ms. Fallon, and this is on the Collaborative for Educational Services, which she now represents the school committee on.
I do, and I don't know that I appreciated Mr. Moore's service in that respect until I sat on it myself and approved our first budget, and needed them to, they printed out three pages of acronyms for me, because everything's an acronym, all of the grants, all the state grants, federal grants, everything's an acronym. So, yeah, it's a steep learning curve. But in the process of our last meeting, we were looking at the, amending the Articles of Agreement, and I noticed that the state law required us to report out to the school committee four times a year, but our Articles of Agreement for the Collaborative said that we were to report back every meeting, and so I made the mistake of bringing it up, and there was pretty clear consensus among the 30 other members present that that was something that I needed to be doing, so I'm...
So my apology for only reporting back like a couple of times a year.
Well, ironically, the reason that we were, we were reviewing the Articles of Agreement was to amend them, to establish a policy committee, and because I noted that, I am now one of the two representatives on the policy committee for the Collaborative, so that didn't work as well as I'd hoped. But anyway, what I'm hoping to do is, you all should have gotten this afternoon, after each meeting, Bill Deal publishes an executive director's report, and it's usually between eight and 15 pages. I'll have that sent to you, and I'm going to make my report less than two minutes and just pick out the highlights of the things that I think are interesting, but if you ever have questions about anything, you can ask me, or I'm assuming Dr. Provost would be able to answer. So the report will be pretty short. The 2019 Summer Academy is in session now with 23 workshops in the areas of history and social studies, special ed, math, science, English, language learners, social justice and equity, technology, Google apps, reading, literacy, trauma, and effective teaching. Another thing that I thought was great was that in order to support member districts who are co-teaching, they're working on assembling a cohort for an advanced training and coaching experience for co-teaching teams. Something that I am crossing my fingers for is that they are investigating other potential shared services and opportunities to save districts' money, and so at the request of several superintendents, they've been investigating translation services that can meet written or verbal translation needs in multiple languages. So they're discussing a possible partnership with Lexicate, a digital translation and interpretation service, to offer special pricing to collaborative members, so I'm waiting to hear back on that. And then something else that I thought was really interesting is that they've just, the Collaborative's just launched a program to host four summer interns from area colleges, and it's the colleges that pay the interns as part of their, as part of their educational experience. So they will be having a Mount Holyoke student working under the supervision of the Director of Development in coordination with alternative education, professional services, research and evaluation on a project titled STEM Education and Pathways: Needs and Assets in the Pioneer Valley, which I thought was really a great thing to do, and the results will be reported to superintendents at their roundtable meetings and made available to the board with the goal of mapping resources and identifying both institutional partners and, more importantly, funding partners to help address STEM needs. So that's my two-minute collaborative report.
Thank you very much. While you have the floor, we'll turn to the report of the Rules and Policies Subcommittee and several first readings that you have on policies tonight.
Right, so they are all first readings, we won't be taking a vote this month. The first reading, if you all recall, we had Noah Cassis, a student at NHS, who spoke to us at our public comment during the last meeting about a proposed revision to our acceptable use policy. He worked with the IT department and district administrators, and then also attended our subcommittee meeting to establish that there was an appropriate procedure in place to protect student data privacy, and that he was, presented a revision to help the rest of the student body to be confident that their personal data is protected. You all should have the policy, there are minor changes to it, and I hope you note the yellow, and that would be really helpful.
I did, I did notice.
Okay. So the language that's been added is that our schools have software and systems in place that monitor and record all internet usage, that the district will make a summary of the procedures governing the use of these softwares and systems public in clear, accessible format in the handbook on the district website. The district will intermittently monitor internet network traffic and other usage of electronic resources, for instance, by tracking destination URLs of individual users. Users should have no expectation of privacy when browsing the web, sending or receiving email, or using other electronic school resources. The district does provide email accounts for the purpose of school-related communication. We also just replaced language where it referred to the district to read the Northampton Public Schools, and made some, I think we just changed student handbook to lowercase letters, and that was always changed on the acceptable use policy, which is policy...
J. N. D. B.
Thank you. Hi, J. N. D. B.
Yeah, just on the copy that we got, there's a place where in that paragraph, it's highlighted, the first couple of sentences is a, is a redundancy, it's a cut and paste that doesn't have the addition in it. You see that? So where it says, "Our schools have software and systems in place," that's the same as under the yellow highlighted, "Our schools have software and systems in place." So really, it's...
Right.
So what we're, what we're reading, that's just, that's a, that's not, what's the word? Scrivener's error?
Yeah.
Sorry, scrivener. That's a, that's not, that's not the text we're talking about. The text we're talking about is the part that's bolded and yellowed.
Right. So the scrivener's error, we will have remedied before we bring it to you for a vote next month. And then next up, we have Section D essentially of our policies that you referred to us to review. The financial auditor recommends that we review the entire Section D, which is, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
If I have a question on this, should I ask it now, or should I wait?
Sure, on the acceptable use policy? Sure.
It's minor. Thank you for this. As you know, I care about this a lot. Two minor things. One, after your big yellow thing, you just need a period. And a question I have, if you go back to the second sentence of this policy, which I understand is quite old, by providing Intranet and Internet access, do we actually have Intranet?
That was something we discussed during the meeting.
And I, so I believe we do. I can't 100% say that that is the case, but I do know that we have some very old structures within the district that I'm not sure have been eliminated. So I was uncomfortable getting rid of that for that reason.
Might be worth just asking before the next reading because in my travels through Northampton Public Schools, I've never come across it, but that doesn't mean it doesn't exist for some of our employees, but I don't think it exists for students anymore.
Yeah, we can certainly verify that before this.
It makes us look like we're in the Dark Ages if we don't have it, I think.
Okay. Was that, was that all?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. And so we were reviewing Section D at the recommendation of our financial auditor. Section D refers to fiscal management, and we're to review that periodically, and it had been a while. So we will be going through the entire section. These first, we decided to divide it up to make it easier. These are all first readings. The first policy is policy DA, fiscal management goals. As you can see, the only thing that we will be changing on that is the adoption date or the revision date when it is approved by the committee. Section, sorry, policy DB, annual budget. The language was modified. This was taken, some of it was taken from the MASC August 2016 update, because ours hadn't been updated prior to that since 2003, to read that the annual budget is the financial expression of the educational program of the school department, and reflects the goals and objectives of the school committee to meet the needs of all students. The budget then is more than just a financial instrument and requires on the part of the committee, the staff, and the community, an orderly and cooperative effort to ensure sound fiscal processes for achieving the educational goals and objectives of the school district. Can I keep going? Okay. File, sorry, policy DBDs, budget goals and objectives. That had initially come from the policy manual from 1978 for the Northampton School Department, and we would like to revise it pretty substantially to read the first priority in the development of an annual budget will be the educational welfare of the children in our schools consistent with the interests of the taxpayers. Before voting to adopt the budget, the committee will scrutinize it thoroughly so that it may be adhered to as adopted. However, the committee recognizes that unforeseen circumstances may require transfers between accounts during a fiscal year. The superintendent will have overall responsibility for budget preparation adhering to deadlines set forth in the city charter. Next, we-
Well, it is a period charter.
Next up, we have policy DBJ, budget transfer authority. The only change to this is in the last paragraph before it works as, "Before the end of each fiscal year, the school committee shall hold a vote to grant the superintendent or he or her designated the authority without the above $10,000 restriction to transfer funds to close the fiscal year books." Next, we have policy DD, funding proposals and applications. We are proposing that we eliminate in the third paragraph, the last part of the sentence, to read, "The superintendent will be responsible for seeking out and coordinating the development of proposals for all specially funded projects." Dr. Provost had mentioned the sheer number of grants and proposals that were generated, and we didn't feel the need to have those submitted to the committee for approval due to the time-sensitive nature of so many of them.
I'd also point out that many of those are done collaboratively through the collaborative, and oftentimes we have just a matter of days in order to sign on if we want to try to be a part of the grant that the collaborative is seeking. So it just, I don't think would be feasible to bring them all before the school committee for approval.
Right.
So I understand the intention there, and I agree with it, but a question I have is, what if there was a proposal that required any sort of spending long-term in a budget from the school committee? Would that not be part of this? So, you know, there's a grant that says, "We want to do this, and we're going to pay for this, but you have to match it in some way." That kind of thing, I would want to make sure did come to the school committee? And is that covered? How do I see that?
So if there was a funding proposal that required us to add resources for a match, then it certainly would be part of the budget. But many of the times when we have grants that require matching funds, we're doing it with existing resources. So for example, a match could be that we provide the building that it takes place in, or the match could be that we provide some of the accounting for it through our business office. So those matches are all done, and they are real matches. They are a contribution of resources from the district, but they're not additional resources. If we had a situation where we needed to create a new position or create, or buy some new equipment in order to meet a match, then it would come to the school committee through the budget process.
That's helpful. I think also, though, if there's, say, equipment that needs to be purchased down the road that, you know, maybe whatever this proposal is buys certain equipment for the first couple of years, and then we have to provide equipment in future years, that kind of thing, I'd also want to come to the school committee. I don't know how to articulate that. I could give a specific example, but how would you go, how do we make sure that we have control over that long-term spending?
Well, I'm really not aware of any situations where you're under an obligation in order to continue to provide a match after the grant runs out. Sometimes you are during the grant period, but once they're no longer providing funding for you, there's no leverage, really. Sometimes there are situations where we will initiate a program based on resources receiving through a grant and then not be able to fund them through the budget, and then the program might end. But I just can't think of a situation where we'd be committing future budgets to resources by participating in a grant in the current budget.
And these are also coming out of MASC, right? A lot of this work is coming out of the things that you've checked on?
Some of it, not all of it.
Not all of it.
Okay.
Not all of it. Sometimes we do have slight variations. I can compare the two. Oh, I have all of it.
So is this from MASC, or is this our own edit?
This edit, I believe, was ours.
And I'm, I wonder if we might want to consider modifying the edit. I understand the reason for it, and it's very reasonable, but modifying it to some extent with, yes, the superintendent will be responsible for seeking and coordinating the development of proposals for all specially funded projects. That's very broad, and I could see a lot of things fitting under what Dr. Provost said, and that's fine, but I do think there are situations where, you know, you would use some judgment and perhaps bring some of these things to the school committee, and at a minimum, I'd like to consider putting in here, and the school committee will be notified, or we're aware of it at least, so that we know what we're committing to.
So I will tell you, Dr. Voss, that when I'm looking at the MASC policy, that what they did do is they put a note at the bottom and said that regulations for staff investigation and submission of proposals are frequently needed to implement a policy in this area. So I guess their view was to do it through, that they understood that some of this was going to be at the regulations level and not at the policy level, but they did include language in the policy that the superintendent will be responsible for seeking out and coordinating the development of proposals for all specially funded projects and for submitting the proposals to the committee for approval.
Ms. Voss, your concerns about long-term life-
I'll give a specific example. And I hesitate because I don't know all the details, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not trying to pick on one specific thing, but we have a global STEM program, which is fantastic, and it came with outside funding, but it also required some matching funding, and it serves a relatively small number of kids and is quite expensive, and it's in our budget. And I think when stuff like that comes in, we should be aware of what we're signing up for, and it lasts for several years. So that's the kind of thing that I would want as a school committee member to know that we were entering and have a sense of, how much is it going to cost us over the next few years, and have some conversation about instead of just letting it be. So that's one example. I don't know-
Okay. Dr. Provost?
And that's an example of an item that comes through the budget. When we started the global STEM program, it was part of my first view budget and then the budget that the school committee adopted for that reason. There was grant funding, but there was new district funds that needed to be committed in order to do it, and so that's why, that's why I see it separate from these other types of proposals where CES, for example, says, "We're applying for the Title III grant as a consortium for the whole district, I mean, for all of our member districts. If you want to participate, you need to sign up in the next three days."
So I wonder, I'm trying to hear, see this as an opportunity. So if we knew that we were buying, if we were agreeing to something, I'm totally hearing you saying, but if we knew we were agreeing to something, then later on, when you came to us and said, "Now the grant funding has run out, but we want, you know, I want your approval for additional dollars," that seems like a winning thing. I mean, you previously endorsed this. So not only that, but, you know, I was struck with what Laura had shared before about all the things that CES is doing, and it was great to hear everything they're doing, and I didn't know which parts of those we're involved with and aren't, which is secondary. But I just wonder if there's a way, without giving you too much more work, but if there's a way we can know, like on a monthly or a bimonthly, every two-month basis, on which grants we have put in, you know, why are we eligible for, what are we waiting to hear about? It would seem like an exciting way to keep up with this stuff, and it would seem like it might accomplish part of what Dr. Voss is asking for, which is we would know right upfront. So it'd be kind of a win-win if that's at all doable, because I was very impressed with the fact that CES is doing all these things. So can we do a similar type of thing, very briefly, to say these are the grants and the proposals that we have put in as a district? Does that sound like-
I think, I think that might be something we could add to one of the reports. The barrier that I'm trying to avoid is getting approval before the applications-
I'm not advocating for that at all. No, I'm not. I'm just saying, so I'm not asking for, I'm just saying, in the spirit of what Dr. Voss was saying, even if we were notified that we might be into it, and then we get it- It seemed like momentum would be there to support it long-term. And we'd be aware of it, and I think we'd be a very, I'm just trying to put a positive spin on it. Positive opportunity around the idea that there's some chances there for us to be more informed about this kind of stuff.
Yeah, and I do believe that's consistent with my practice on a lot of things, like the Innovation Pathway Grant and the grant for the Cisco Academy, where we, I didn't know if we would get it or not, but I did want to make the school committee aware because I think it, you know, had potential educational impact. And there are other things like that that we could certainly do.
Absolutely right. And if there's more, we'd love to know more. But that's a good example.
Ms. Fallon?
I guess I just wanted to understand, is there any reason that this approval, if you were, if there were, like, the proposal portion of it, I don't understand why you would need our approval for unless it was somehow a binding grant? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, if it came down to the fact that we were going to have to provide something to match, or it was going to be a program that would need funding in the future, couldn't it come to us after the fact? So I'm just, I'm just saying, from a policy perspective, there's nothing to prevent you from applying for any of these things, that you wouldn't need our approval for the proposal portion of it, but in the, in the event that you actually were awarded the grant, I understand that's not necessarily fair to those who then wouldn't have been awarded the grant, but I'm saying, like, isn't that something where if it turns out there was going to need to be a contribution, that we could just deal with that at that time?
Right. The issue is that, the one you brought up, you could place the school committee in an awkward position of saying, "No, we don't want to accept these funds." I do think there's a way that we can, we can address it, though, when, for example, the proposals are being developed for any, which is probably the main granting source we get in terms of number of grants we get over the course of the year. Those proposals are sent to the principals, and they're sent to me to make sure that they're consistent with the educational goals of the community, and then they come to you for acceptance. We could, I think, probably have some kind of a similar process, only it would be after proposals are submitted for other things, you know, for private grants and for competitive public grants.
I thank you. I think what Dr. Kaufman articulated fits with what I was trying to get to. And maybe instead of what's crossed out, replace, crossing out what's crossed out, but adding something to the effective, and the committee will be notified of proposals we are pending or part of, or however you want to word it. And then when something comes up and says, "Oh, I see that the schools apply for blah, blah, blah," we at least know what's happening, and we don't look like, we have no clue of what's going on. So I think that would feel like a good compromise.
Okay, so we're going with that premise, then?
Sure.
Because it's just the first reading, so.
Well, do you want me to offer a different phrase there for next month, or do you want me to say it for next month?
Yeah, if you want to bring something, that's fine.
Not now?
No, like, we're not voting on it next-
It's on first reading, but, so that would be something you could bring for a second.
Okay, sure.
Ms. Hennessy?
I guess I will, I'll comment when Dr. Voss makes the amendment the next time. I'm uncomfortable with it, because I feel like it's a policy making the suggestion for how we want the superintendent to behave, and that's part of his evaluation of how he's communicating with us. So I think that's part of his job description, and to make it in part of a policy statement, to me, oversteps the policy. So I think he's doing it. I feel very well informed, and I would, so I think that's part of the superintendent evaluation, not part of the policy. So when you make a recommendation, we can hash that out, but that's throwing out my eighth sense of my mind.
So I'm probably still pursuing the idea slash policy of bringing the grant proposals once awarded to the school committee for approval? Is that what you mentioned?
I actually don't know where we are on it now. There were many proposals made back and forth. I will say this, the grants that are included in the budget and that are part of the budget moving forward are part of the overall school budget that you receive and are asked to vote on every year. So there's that. I guess this would just be an initial, an additional piece of saying, new grants that come in after the budget is approved, just to be notified about those as well.
Well, I guess I just want to say, the notion that, I think when you write grants and you sign off, or a superintendent signs off on a grant, that they're a part of it, whether it's our grant to a foundation or to a funder, or whether we're signing on as part of the collaborative, I think the expectation is we're going to live up to our financial responsibilities. So I think we'd be walking a really fine line for us to then come back and ask the school committee to vote on that. So I don't know who mentioned that, but my belief is that if we make a commitment to be part of a grant, that we've made that commitment, and coming back and asking for a revote at that point would be problematic. So we're definitely against that notion. I think we'd be walking into some real trouble.
Okay. All right. Sounds like we'll have a good discussion on this on the second reading.
Next, you have policy DFH, fundraising events, and as you can see, it is awaiting further deliberation, so it is in fact waiting for further deliberation with the characters. And then the final policy is policy DH, bonded employees and officers, that we are not recommending any changes to. It's two sentences, and they were accurate.
Except the adoption date.
Yeah, except the adoption date.
So that'll just be updated.
Okay.
Yeah, and so those will all be brought back to you in the next one of the second meetings, and perhaps, I mean, sort of first reading on the rest of Section D.
Thank you for those two reports. Next, we'll have a report from the business manager.
Good evening. In your packet was the fiscal '19 appropriation report that was run as of July 3rd. There's still lots of transactions that are happening, trying to close out year-end, trying to do the final payroll. trying to close out year-end, trying to do the final payroll, get the incumbents list over to the city auditor's office. So, we're trying to complete all those tasks by this Friday. So, then we'll have a good standing of where we finish the end of the year. So, those things are still in process at the moment. The gifts, we do have one gift from the PTO, Ridge Street PTO, for $393.27 that we accepted this Friday. And also, there are two warrants that your representatives signed for bill warrants during the month of June. There's two other things that I'd like to mention. We accepted online payments for the first time during June through our city treasurer's office with Unipay. And we set up in the beginning for a trial. We did bus transportation, so the bus passes are being paid online if people choose to do so. And we also have our athletic fees that are on there as well. In the first week, we had 75 families pay online, so we took in over $19,000 on online payments. And with the way the Unipay system works, it's a 25 cent per transaction fee if they're doing an ACH. If you're using a credit card, it's a little bit different structure, and it tells you right up front what it is that way. So, those are some positive things that we're trying to have people have some convenience if they choose to do so rather than coming in the office or mailing it. They have that availability as well.
Cheaper than a stamp.
Exactly. My thoughts as well. And we have set it up so they can do multiple children on the same 25 cent transaction. The second thing I wanted to mention is our Summer Meals program is running through our first food service program. And Ms. Delhanna, who's our food service director, notified me that last week was the first week. They ran it for four days, and they served over 250 meals in the first four days. So, that program is running successful, and this is her first year doing that, and she's started that program up, so that's also running very well.
Some of us enjoyed some of that meals today, actually.
Yep.
To remind people that everybody can go.
Yes.
I think that's a really important piece of this.
Today was special for adults. Usually it's just children.
That's right. Just children. Sorry.
So, children-
Daddy chum.
We'll argue next time.
Any child 18 and under. And also, she just wanted to, Ms. Del wanted me to let you know that they're changing the time just slightly because of the summer program. They were missing the time by a little bit, so if they're going to be running the programs, it's on our website with a revised time. It's from 12:00 to 1:00 at the sites rather than 11:30 to 12:30, and those revised sheets are, and the menus are on our district website as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And now we turn with 7:35, 7:50, to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. On June 17th, the NPS all listserv received an email that some mistook for spam. It said simply, "Dear colleague, how did you spend your 180 days? I had to send out a second message reminding everyone that this was connected to convocation." I don't know why people forget about convocation. I thought it was a good message. The convocation message, of course, was focused on the idea that time is our most precious resource of all, because there's no measure of creative budgeting, no new technology, no curriculum that can add a single day to the instructional year. We can waste time, but we cannot manufacture it. And so, it is up to us to put each school day to its highest instructional use. I'd intended the emails and invitation to private self-reflection on how our employees had spent the time that they'd been given with our students. I didn't expect that recipients would want to share their reflections with me, but many have. I've enjoyed reading them, and so I'd like to follow suit by sharing my own time study with the public. My first task was to address central office and district staff turnover. Our school business administrator, transportation supervisor, food service director, and school committee clerk all left their positions at about the same time. Filling these key positions and bringing new staff up to speed was essential to maintaining operations. In all these cases, we were able to find experienced, competent, and friendly staff who've not only kept things running, but have come with a number of fresh ideas to help us better serve the public, such as Unipay that you just heard about, and such as Summer Meals, which you just heard about. Then, next several months were dedicated to the district review process. I will say it one last time. We submitted 1,148 artifacts to the district review team. And although we've not yet received their report, we did learn a lot about ourselves through the self-study process. We felt that we'd made tremendous progress addressing concerns that had been noted in the last district review, particularly in the areas of financial and asset management, curriculum, student support, technology, and supervision. And we were also able to zero in on assessment practices and professional development is our high priority needs for district improvement, our continuing areas of weakness. Our August professional development will focus on enhancing consistency and quality of our assessment practices as we begin heading down that path. Whether or not we're able to improve professional development will depend on collective bargaining. We still have the same amount of professional development time in our calendar that was deemed insufficient in our 2011 district review, so we'll see what happens with that. Just as the district review was winding down, the FY '20 budget development process went into high gear. As has been the case for two of the last three budget cycles, we've received extensive public comment, which required us to make substantial changes between our first view budget and our final version. It wasn't quite as bad as the year when we had to construct three complete budget scenarios, but it did require some long and fairly intense additional budget meetings as the ALT team struggled to work and rework and partially undo the original budget proposal. While we were working through the budget process, negotiations for a successor contract started. And as you all know, this has consumed a great deal of time and energy from our office. Normally, there's a brief lull between the adoption of the budget and the end-of-year activities, but there was no pause this year. In addition to contract negotiations, late spring brought the news that Sal Canata was leaving Leeds, so he started the search that ultimately brought us to Ms. Wentz. Three-quarters into the way of the Leeds search, Mr. Lombardi announced that he was leaving the high school. I felt that, I felt as if the year was coming full circle. Only instead of filling central office positions, I was now facing a wave of principal vacancies. So, the pace of the work has been bustling, and the major expenditures of my time have been in the areas of personnel, budget, and program evaluation. And these are all important aspects of the job. They demanded my attention this year, leaving me little time to focus on anything else, so I think I spent my time about as well as I could have. I did miss spending time in the schools and direct contact with families, and I hope that some of the things that have been taking me away from that work this year, I'll be able to get back to next year as some of the things currently on my plate are able to be resolved. Next year, I think it'll be important for me to focus more time on spending, spending time in schools with our new building administrators. And we will also be launching two additional principal searches in the fall for the high school and for Jackson Street. And so, I've begun thinking about how I can develop my professional practice goals next year to give me some intention and some focus to getting back into buildings. So, that's how I've spent my 180 days, and I've given you a little glimpse into my intentions for the upcoming year. I hope you'll agree that focusing on these priorities for the past goal was worthy, and that the ambition of spending more times in schools and more times with families in the next year is also a worthwhile goal. That's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Provost. Next, we have a, the final item on the agenda is a executive session request, and I would ask if the vice chair would make a motion on that. Oh, sure.
Make a motion for an executive session request for the executive session under Massachusetts General Law, open meeting, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Northampton Association of School Committees. School, thank you. School employees. Whereas an open session would have a detrimental effect, and further details would compromise the reason for going into executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I would ask the clerk to call a roll call vote on that, and that requires a yea or nay.
Smiley Bronner?
Yay.
Laura Fallon?
Yes.
Sam Hennessy?
Yes.
Mr. Lon Cossit?
Yes.
Mr. Howard Moore?
Yes.
Susan Boss?
Yes.
Pastor Ed Zehausi?
Yes.
Mayor David Arbusi?
Yeah.